Good evening, everyone. This is Denise Cleary, Interim Superintendent of Schools, with the 2020-2021 budget presentation for the Linden Public School District. Our district consists of several buildings and facilities. Currently, we have our Linden High School, which is made up of three buildings. We have our main building, our Linden Academy of Science and Technology, and our Academy of Excellence. We have two middle schools and eight elementary schools. In addition, we have support buildings, such as our administration building, our professional development and science resource center, our maintenance facility, and our field house and athletic field. Our proposed operational budget for the 2020-2021 school year is just over $138 million. And with special revenues, our budget totals just over $145 million. Fortunately, this year, we are able to boast that we will have no student programs or service cuts. Under curriculum instruction, we are able to hire five new certificated staff members, continue professional development for staff, bring on a new social studies resources for grades K through 5, and continue with our technology one-to-one learning initiative. In addition, we were able to make improvements to our facilities through capital improvements. At School 1, we will be air conditioning the gymnasium. At School 4, we will be replacing the heating and air conditioning systems. At Schools 5 and McManus will be the replacement of boilers. We will do a roof replacement in the gymnasium at Soul Middle School. The guidance offices will be renovated at Linden High School, and also the gymnasium roof will be replaced. At the Linden Academy, we plan on purchasing land to develop a freshman academy. And then, we will have toilet room renovations at various schools, and also do a repair and replace the existing field for safety purposes at our athletic field. At this time, I would like to turn it over for the fiscal component to our business administrator, Ms. Kathleen Gaylord.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with a state aid comparison. Linden has never been fully funded to the maximum that the state is supposed to be contributing. Throughout the years, we've been so underfunded. And over the 2018-19 to the current 2020-21 year, we've been brought up a little bit, which has helped considerably. And the highlighted section shows that it was $27 million, and now we're getting $36 million, which helps the taxpayers. We also have an assessment, the School Development Authority Assessment. We had a grant years ago, and now they're assessing us on the grant. That's why it's a negative number. And we had a slight increase in our preschool aid. So the total aid that we are receiving this year is $39,724,398. Revenues. Where does the money come from? Well, as you can see by this slide, that most of our revenues do come from local taxes. But we also get 26, almost 27% now in state aid. And then, we have various other areas: tuition, interest on reserves, miscellaneous revenues, Medicaid reimbursement, extraordinary aid, budgeted fund balance, which is money left over from the prior year that we put toward the budget, as well as withdrawal from Capital Reserve, which is used for our facility renovations. Expenditures for this year. Our main portion of our expenditure is instruction of regular programs, which includes instructional salaries, ESL, world language, media, vocational programs, guidance, and charter school payments. Special education. The cost is for special education costs in district as well as out-of-district tuition. Health and student activity are our co-curricular programs, athletics, attendance officers, and nurses. Operations and maintenance are custodial maintenance and security salaries, in district costs for the day-to-day maintenance of buildings by our Board of Education employees. Personnel services and employee benefits include benefits, workers' compensation payments, Social Security contributions, PERS contributions, which are non-certificated staff. The Board of Education pays half, and the employee pays half. And for the teachers, the teachers pay half, and the state pays half toward their pension. Also, we have transportation, which is transportation to and from school as well as athletic programs, buses to athletic programs. Administrative costs are principals, directors, central office, and IT department salaries and all of the other components that go in those areas. I always like to show an analysis of our tax bill because from 2001 to present, the school portion of the tax bill has gone down. Even though it's the largest portion, it's still going down from 2001, which it was 55, almost 56%, to now, in the new year, it's only 50%. So it's gone down almost 6%, So we're trying to maintain the tax rate for everybody, which helped because we received more school aid. What does this mean to a homeowner? The median assessed valuation, which is the number they give to a middle-valuated house in the city of Linden at $131,913, your annual payment, increased payment, would be $45.88, which comes to $3.82 a month increase toward our new budget. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I just have to find out, are we, for the board, also able to ask questions around this presentation?
Absolutely.
All right. Questions?
On the budget.
First one. What was the last change that was emailed today regarding the budget that was originally presented to the...
The change is going to be discussed.
The changes are going to be discussed?
Correct.
Is this the forum to discuss the changes or not? Just to make sure.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, sir.
All right, so can... Put this presentation of the budget to the public. Can we be transparent and find out why the changes that were added to the budget?
You have to tell me that. The board has to tell me the changes that were going to be made to the budget.
Fortunately, Ms. Gaylord, it's the administration that's this budget to us, and it's the administration that is making changes. And although I have a budget in front of me, the public does not have that budget in front of them. So it would be a good idea for you or anybody from the administration to tell us what were the changes that were added to the budget that we discussed in the presentation?
The changes were not my recommendation, so the changes have to come from a discussion with the board.
Well, it was a proposed change that was highlighted in yellow that we received an email at 3 o'clock today.
Thank you. Thank you, man. This is what I'm talking about, getting last-minute information.
Somebody's going to say something here.
Okay, so the proposal for the new budget was to recommend a zero-tax increase. So you will see from the old... From the prior budget that's proposed by the board secretary, we have, number one, an inclusion of approval from general funds from $1.6 million to an increase of $3.4318 million to be withdrawn from the Capital Reserve budget, which will entail... Provide us a zero-tax levy. So the new proposed budget will provide a zero-tax levy budget.
So that levy is coming out of our Capital Reserve?
Capital Reserve, that's correct.
When did we have a discussion about this? Does it hold for it?
I don't know.
Well, we were supposed to have it now, but the whole process of the way the meeting went, the order of the meeting didn't go in order the way it was supposed to, so...
Well, that's maybe why we shouldn't do three meetings in one night.
Well, again, to the... The team today, we cannot throw this check to the last minute for us, because it's a matter of hours. Certain good information for the education process in our cities are in practice. And this is something that all of us, as board members, we need to understand. The pro... Or is taking... Both parts are not working.
Do you understand what call you're saying? What... What prompted this decision to pull that money out of our Capital Reserve after we discussed it over the budget last month?
And not only that,
Maybe Mr. Rivas would like to explain why.
What are to us to have that money? The original budget that came to us only ten... Before it was possible. And they asked. A change, levy.
Folks, there's an awful lot of feedback. If you could please mute your microphone if you're not speaking, therefore, everyone will be able to hear each other. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to interject, uh, Carlos. This is the time in the forum where we make these discussions, our work session is for this purpose. We don't meet prior. We can't meet prior for committing. So this is the time to put everything on the table and see what our options are. We had a discussion of what proposal we had last meeting with the 1% tax increase. And we all voted to have that taken in to the county for approval. This is the time where we just go back and go. We know the proposal in this vehicle is to put money out of the Capital Reserve to help the public during pandemic to have a zero for debt tax increase. So this is what we have to decide together. You know, we keep... This is the time where we... Where we have got this. There is a price on it. This is the time. We vote the month. And this is where we look at others and as a group, we decide what's best for our district and for our community at this time.
I think you understand that, Mary. I said, just a question. I'm all for helping the people all for saving the community costs. But who made the decision to just pull that money out of Capital Reserve? I just want to know where the... Where the thought came from.
The money is not pulled out. We have to discuss it now.
Well, now, who can help when we withdraw this money from next month to this month?
Well, I'll answer, Mrs. Maggiano. The budget that was submitted to the county was the budget I recommended and I proposed. And that's what was approved. Then, it came through that the board was not happy or other people were not happy that we were having a tax increase at a time of a pandemic. So that what you received this afternoon was if, in fact, the board decided to go with a zero levy increase, there would be the resolution and the page from the budget, so you would have it in front of you.
Okay, now, Ms. Gaylord, the budget increase, if we were to go with the original one from last...
It's not an increase. It's not an increase to the budget. It's a change in revenue.
No, I'm talking about the original one that we approved last month.
Correct.
What would the total... What would the increase be per household? Isn't it pretty obvious that we see it on that screen?
Yes.
Okay, now, can the money that we have in the Capital Reserve be used if, God forbid, it happens to be state aid and we can't find enough money to pay for our teachers?
Um, I don't know.
Can we pull it from the Capital Reserve at that point in time? If Governor Murphy says you're going to get no money, let's just say worst case scenario, you're going to get no money from the state, can we pull it from the Capital Reserve to make sure we don't have to lay off any of our teachers? Because if so, I'm against pulling for a $3 budget at all.
Mr. Shahada, we cannot take money out of Capital Reserve to pay for teachers unless we get a special approval from the Department of Education. Capital Reserve money can only be used for facilities.
Completely understood. But if we get that... If we get no state aid, I'm pretty sure that they will grant us permission, right? It's speculation, but...
And so also, it's speculation because it's statute and law and code. We can only take money out of Capital Reserve for facilities. If, in fact, due to the pandemic and due to a fiscal crisis, the governor allows us to use reserves that are not allowable under the law, then we may be able to do that. So at this point... At this point, it's not... It's... At this point, it's a no. We can't do that. But I have no idea because of this whole situation what will transpire. So basically, you received a budget. You've had it for a month. That was the budget that was put together and sent to the county. You can vote no that you don't want the budget that was submitted to the county, or you can vote yes that you want to leave the budget as it was submitted to the county. If you vote no that you would prefer to have more money taken out of Capital Reserve so you could have a zero levy increase, then you would take a vote on that separately. That's why you have those extra papers in front of you. Ordinarily, if we were sitting in front of each other, we could have had this conversation, and the papers would have... I wouldn't have sent them out to you. I sent them out to you so there would be no confusion if everyone voted no on the budget, which was what I heard was going to happen. And then, you would have the proper resolutions to vote on. So you can vote no and say, no, I don't want the budget the way you submitted it and it was approved by the county. Or you can vote, and then you can say, we want to have a zero levy increase. And then, you would vote for the other number. That's what those papers are that you got today.
We got money to gamble for a house. We don't want a household if we can... If we have a slant spot in that money if we don't receive any state aid.
I don't think we will not receive any state aid. I don't think we will receive no state aid. We don't know what we're going to get. It could be flat, and then it would be $5 million less than we get got this year. Or it could be the same.
I... This is what I'm saying, Ms. Gaylord, and the budget you present to us about before, what day before could be submitted to the county, no, no one is... In this board, we're going to talk much and try to go make changes or to ask questions. I had to remind this board that I tried to take with this budget because of the flat. Paying it to us another... Because the two day was the next day. But people to ask and they put me back all this... We take the money out of Capital, what we have on out whether we add a tax levy to our... To Linden. There, that nobody can explain or give us an explanation. And I'm going to go again, our teachers being anxious, but we do not know what's going to happen. And we are putting voters where we're going to have tariffs for instructions being raised of almost $600,000 and added $3,000, almost $800,000 for purchase incentives. And I think this is the part when it's going to be about the iPad. Let me find me wrong. And then, the other increases for 2021. A bad party rehabbing a month. Being experts will not in the budget, okay? Can we have anybody explain us the reason of what all these proposals are? The proposal that we given in the budget was given to us a night before the meeting and a day before we were submitted to the county. And it happened today. They received an email at 3 o'clock with ages. And nobody discussed this change. How can we petition a board like this?
Uh, Mr. Rivas, excuse me. You received a budget on March 26th. At that time, I told everyone that that was the budget. It was a tentative budget. If anybody had questions or anybody had concerns or they wanted explanations more so than we gave, to please contact me. No one contacted me. Not one person contacted me in a month. No one.
I knew that I was against that budget and against the present issue and against the process that was used. Besides the matter, I'm going to remind this board that I'm not an accountant and have all these questions answered. We were told... We were told before we were to approve that they were going to communicate with us in regards to changes or proposals. And we were only being communicated with us one hour before a meeting today, which was an email that we received at 3 o'clock.
So then, what you want to do then is vote yes on the budget that you've had for a month?
I just don't feel comfortable. And I'm pretty sure that, you know, one of my colleagues would agree with me that we're having outside forces in our budget. You said, when you were explaining it to me, that some people, other than the board members, weren't happy with the budget part. I don't care what anybody else I say we want to worry based, you know, on behalf of the whole city. You know, we can't be swayed by political interference when it comes to the budget, salaries, jobs, cuts, building, infrastructure, whatever it is. I just think it's... It's crazy that we're not all in the loop and we're trying to pick up the pieces in front of 40,000 people on this call.
I have a comment, but I have a question. Well, I have a question for Ms. Gaylord. So I just want to be clear. With what you spent, right? Is that $3 million that's supposed to be taken out out of their revenue to help with the zero increase? Is that what you're saying?
No. What we... What I did was I originally was taking $1.6 million out of Capital Reserve. Now, we're taking 3.... Now, we're taking... We're going from $1.6 million to 3. almost 5 million. We're taking that out of Capital Reserve and putting it into the budget because we can, because it's going into capital projects. It's not going in to pay teachers. It's not going in to buy supplies. It's going in to pay for the projects that are being planned for the 2021 year.
Is that a possibility?
3 million left? Is that what you're saying?
No. We have... We'll have 8 million left.
Now, how before we have a reserve?
We'll have 8 million left.
After... After taking up 3 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that 8 million was to pay for the freshman academy that we were hoping to build. That's what that was in there for. That wasn't just excess money that I had hanging around. That was what the cost of the freshman academy was going to be.
Okay, so we... So I understand where that is coming from, but you're saying that we can't even use that money for teachers anyway?
We can petition the state for that money, though. And I'd rather save it just in case. I'm not comfortable with laying off teachers.
But honestly, I understand people going for...
But we can't predict the future. So I'd rather be conservative now than...
If we're going to be able...
In 3 months, what did we do?
If we were to lay off teachers in the future, wouldn't that be non-tenure teachers?
Yes.
It's not, but it could be a non-tenure. It's still me. It's somebody's job. It's a little penny.
But I understand where you're coming from, I mean. But you also need to understand that there's a lot of people who can't even afford to pay their mortgage. So I need to be...
We have to keep in mind it's $3 a household. $3 a...
I understand.
And it's penny. People losing their job. People that me and you went to school with, Jenata. These are our friends. These are our age group. These are our cohorts of Linden High School graduates who came back to teach in our district who are gonna lose their job.
They've got a good job, they're not getting...
Who work in City Hall. It's completely illogical. But we don't make our own decisions. I'm not trying to, I'm just giving my point of view.
Yes, but you guys speak, I mean, we don't want to give me an opportunity. All I was just trying to say is, I hear what you're saying and I understand. However, they're not going to be fired. They cannot be fired for their job, they cannot be terminated.
Non-tenure teachers can be fired or let go.
Yes.
Even the first ones on the total poll to go.
Well, from being on the Union County School Board and listening to the meeting, and what they informed me, is that nothing has been approved as of yet, however. If something were to happen, God forbid, from what I understand is that if any teachers were to be affected by this, that they're not going to, they're just gonna go unemployment. Now I also have to consider...
And it's the way it was.
And, girl, like my mom, she's a nurse, okay? She's a nurse, and everyone in my household cannot work. I can't work, my brothers can't work, they can't go to school, we can't do nothing. My mom is literally like doing the best, working overtime and everything just to pay our mortgage. If I tell you how much our mortgage is, like I can only imagine people who actually don't have a job and who need to pay for their mortgage.
I understand, and we're making the same point from different angles. I'm trying to save jobs over $3 a household. I don't, I understand where you're coming from, but we have to be conservative at this point in time because we don't know what's gonna happen in 3 months. Even if teachers are furloughed and they don't technically lose their job, they don't get paid. Just as bad as...
This is a personal vote for everyone, Ahmed, you know.
To everybody who's here, 300%.
It is here, but it's a personal vote.
Hey, guys, hey, look, and then, look, let's listen up. Both of you guys are on the opposite side of the fence, I get that. So obviously, your votes are gonna be different. One thinks one way, one thinks the other. It's a nine-member board, everyone has a vote, and you vote the way you feel, and that's the way it is. So, you know, I can understand what you're saying, you have a disagreement. I've had disagreements on this board for five years I've been here. I voted no on the budget for the first two years I was here. As do two others sitting here. But there are others there that said, no, we're voting for a tax increase. So, fine. I was the minority, we vote for a tax increase. So this is where we are right now. Simple as that.
Great.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, Ahmed, but look, let's go back three years ago. I don't wanna get into it. You have a vote, I have a vote, you have nine separate votes here. You're gonna either vote 1, you're gonna support the budget with the increase, or 2, you're not gonna support the budget with no increase. It's that simple. It doesn't get any... You feel a different way than Shenator feels. One person may feel a different way, that's the way it is.
Can I please get clarification with a question?
The question is, are we going to vote yes on the budget that was approved on March 26th with a 2% levy increase at the amount...
I have something to say.
Can I answer a question, please?
That's Patrick, okay.
Patrick, I was answering your question.
Yes, no, no, I have a question, I have a question. So the $3 increase per household, that's monthly, correct?
That's monthly, correct.
That's monthly, is that based on what value of the household that...
The median household, $131,779.
Okay, so if the house is worth that much, I know black houses in Lyndon now over $300,000. So if that one's gonna be more than that, correct?
Correct.
So at that point, if you're saying your house is worth $340,000 in a tax assessment, at that point, it's 15...
Well, it's, Patrick, it's what your house is assessed at. Doesn't mean what you can sell it for. You can sell it for $400,000, but it might only be assessed for $131.
$131, okay, thank you.
And its annual is $45.88.
Thank you.
So now...
So then, we need to save money, we should stop the project of the $8 million freshman academy that we're building?
That is your decision to make.
I think in times like this, I agree very seldom with the mayor, but in times like this, we need to be conservative with our money because we don't know what's gonna happen in 3 months, we don't know what's gonna happen in 5 months.
So this is what the vote is gonna be. You're either gonna vote yes to submit, to agree to this budget that was submitted, or no, you wanna go with a zero levy increase. Those are the two things. Yes means you're gonna vote on this budget. No means you're gonna vote on a zero levy increase. Okay?
There is two things that we can hold on, how long? Give me more time to discuss this.
There is no more time.
There is no more time, Mr. Revis. Mr. Revis.
One month.
We've got one month, we've got to do this, we've got one month to look at it. One month. We make a decision tonight, one way or the other.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Excuse me, Mr. Doris. I'm getting a lot of feedback from everyone. I'm hearing a lot of huff, piss, whispers, and repeat. So I think everybody needs to take a breath and slow down because it's coming across all levels and I'm not getting, you know, everybody's responses or questions clearly.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk to Ben and listen, okay?
All right, so this is Carlos Revis again in regards to the concern that they gave us one month to look at the budget. Mr. Matucci, it is not that they gave us one month to look at the budget. Nobody can just force us to vote on what you are deciding or what the administration decided. How can I vote in a budget that I have a lot of questions about? Not for everybody, not with the budget or many of the items of this agenda that was presented to us. And how can I vote in a budget for that? They present changes, but the majority of my board members agree that more to look at the grant. Only because it's ever one more time. It's always, we have to do this because we are against that.
Mr. Revis, I've sent you the budget twice. You never give me one time with a question. I told you you could call me anytime, I would meet with you, I would go line by line. You never called me once in a month. So please don't say I'm rushing this because you've had it for a whole month.
Mr. Gallo, I did not have it for a month, four months because first, I did not agree on it. And second, you just sent me a copy of the budget on Friday. And in that copy of the budget, these changes will not include it.
Yeah, oh, excuse me.
In the form of the budget, the whole application had anything to do with the decision that was presented to us that some people may or may not want that to create it. Again, how is it that we're going to continue to improve all of that conversation? How important that is? When are we gonna do this?
Mr. Revis, the budget you got on Friday is the same budget you got on March 26th. It's exactly the exact same budget with the exact numbers.
But when did we have a discussion as a full board about the budget?
It was called a pandemic.
Now, we used...
But we're not having a full discussion as a board.
Well, Tracy, it's never been done before, so I guess it would have been the first year we had it.
And of course, now we're forced to either vote of this or vote of that. That should not be.
Well, you can vote to have a tax increase or not, Mr. Revis.
But that is not the budget, the budget is not a tax increase because they're pretty sure that if we have a discussion with the budgets, we can find areas where we can spend money. And we can, all of us, at a hall, we can take risk on many of the places that they are placing money from one area to another, that we can save. We can save the people of the city a tax increase and we can save ourselves money. We understand that every question has its own pursuit of questions that we have to respond to, our just situation in Lyndon.
Absolutely, and that was why we increased the withdrawal from capital reserve instead of laying off teachers or cutting programs. We increased, we took the 1.8 million, that was the increase in the tax levy, and we made it zero, zero levy increase.
What information? What information?
Yes, Patrick?
So I have a quick question. With this state pushing back tax aid to the schools and everything related to state budgets and everything like that, why hasn't the county allowed schools to have a delay on their budgets? That way we can review things further with the pandemic that we're going through.
The state will not allow, I asked, the state will not allow. We have, because it's statutory, we cannot change statute.
But I have a question, with the A3904, I'm assuming, because I'm not looking at my paper, didn't it pass, don't we have the right to... I believe the fact that you can delay the process, this later deadline to submit.
No, no, that's not what that was. That was for the city to delay paying us the money that they have to give us for the levy. That wasn't for us to delay the budgets.
Where the school board on the budget hearing last night, where they come to terms and they are reselling for next week, but why can't we do that here?
For what purpose? Either you want a levy increase or you don't.
For more information, to have a meeting with the entire board to discuss the budget.
Here we go, the gentleman that we've got, he's got a week's money or does not take out of a council budget. He's led, he's been here, here today, project. But we not just take it from one time to another. Instead, you have to go to the other place, and just not. And I tell everyone, you do not do what they ask you to do. I'm not changing the fact. Don't, don't, for both, you don't ask not reason to cooperate.
Can you hear him?
Hey, anybody else have any comments? You're gonna have to vote tonight, guys. You're gonna have to vote tonight. You're either gonna vote yes, you're gonna vote no, you're gonna abstain. That's what you're gonna do. And we'll just see how the votes go. If a majority of the people vote in favor, then basically, the way the budget is, there'll be a tax increase, whatever it would be. If you vote no, it would go to a zero based, no tax increase. That's it, or you want to abstain, that you don't want to vote yes, you don't want to vote no, you can abstain. That's your choice as a board member, you're elected to make a decision. You gotta make a decision tonight, one way or the other. It's decision time. It's the $130 million budget, we need money to operate. We've got to do this one way or the other. This is an operating budget.
All right, Rachel, I just add something really quick. I just want to say something really quickly, just to add on about the budget issue.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Doris.
Yeah, this is Doris. I just wanted to say that everybody is thinking about now. Well, I'm not gonna say everyone is thinking about now, but we also have to remember that we did vote yet, for those of us that voted yet, to send it to the county, you know, because it was the deadline. The changes, I was able to look at the numbers briefly, and it wasn't a significant change. It's just a refiguration of numbers. But I'm gonna make a suggestion to everyone, including myself. In the future, you know, when I was elected to the board and sat at the first meeting, it was made clear to me that I was able to go to anyone with questions, whether it's the school board, or whether it's the administration building, or even City Hall, if I have questions, I am entitled and I have a right to ask them. So in the future, no matter where you get that paper, you know, probably make that phone call. Don't wait for now because we're using time that we could address issues with. And this, we voted, those were the people to send it to the county because it was a deadline, okay? And it needed to be in the office by that deadline. We voted yes. Now, the issue is coming up over some numbers, and, you know, I'm a little bit confused because I'm seeing a little bit of change in the way of people voting or thinking of voting and didn't make that phone call or send that email. I'm like everyone else, I'm busy, I'm taking care of 89-year-olds, so my days are very filled with care. And I, you know, I'm checking my phone or emails constantly. But I'm just throwing that out there, in future, please, use the avenues of communication, that way we could have clarification on a lot of these things. And be all, you know, because this conferencing, this phone thing is killing me. I can barely understand some of you guys. And you know how we do at some of our meetings, we get a little pitchy. So it's vibrating through the phone. And we have to be cognizant of time, you know? So that's all I wanted to add, you know? Greg, you could go ahead and continue to facilitate to you.
Greg, I just have one more comment, or question, rather. Mr., direct to Ms. Gaylord. When was the, when was the decision made to pull that 1.8, propose the 1.8 million?
I didn't hear that, here, go, it was a lot, I didn't hear that.
Oh, sorry, when was the decision, or to propose the 1.8 million to be pulled? Was that something that happened today or before we got it today?
The 8 million...
It hasn't been pulled, Ahmed, it hasn't been pulled.
The proposal of it.
There was a discussion, Ahmed, just like you had discussions about using the capital reserve money for people in the future if we had it. Other people had discussions about having a zero levy increase. So...
This was just today, that might be, today, that's what I'm asking.
No, the only reason this was sent out was in case you decided to vote no on the budget as it was submitted and as it was approved. I wanted you to have the papers in front of you at home so when we discussed what happened, you would be able to see it. If you're gonna vote yes, you want the budget to go the way it was submitted, these papers are meaningless.
Now, can I test, who was a part of this meeting of the minds that came up with the decision that we may need two alternatives last minute? Where did that phone call come from? Was it from Greg, was it from Squeri, was it from the mayor, was it from Governor Murphy, you know? You guys gotta give something, one minute.
I don't think that matters because where did you get we could take the money out of capital reserve for personnel?
I talked about it like 10 minutes ago when I said it.
So... Would you have to know who's having conversations about our budget without the rest of the board?
It was not a conver...
No conversation, Tracy. Look, if I said this once, I said it a thousand times. Each board, no, you're not listening. Each board member is an individual, it is your duty and your responsibility, as I am. I learned things this week about teachers and layoffs and furloughs and all. I didn't know, I ask questions. But if you're not gonna ask any questions, it's your job as a board member. We are all individuals, we are all separate boards. If you're not gonna ask any questions on anything, on anything you don't understand, you got a superintendent, you got a B.A., you got S. S, we are all laid people, this is not our job. But if you're not gonna ask questions, then you know what, so be it. I'm asking questions, I found things out this week that I didn't know, that I asked, would this happen, would that happen? And I learned a lot this year, and I've been an education for 50 years. But I did my job as me, me, I wanted to know what it was. So if you're not gonna ask any questions, there's nothing I can help you with.
So the question they're asking...
We're asking questions, but you're going off in telling a story about the funding of the budget.
The question that they're asking is, what prompted Ms. Gaylord to have that 0% budget, the one with the 0%, sent to them, that's the question.
Well, I think what was going on, I had a feeling at the president that this budget was not gonna pass. That's my job, just like, hey, just like 3 years ago, Ahmed. Ray Topolus, people's break up one night, how you voting on the budget? What are you gonna do with the budget? I said, I don't think I'm gonna vote for it. I said, but I don't want a tax increase. That's my job as the president, they gotta feel where the board is going. And I got a feel for the board, I honestly, and I didn't know, but I think it was gonna be close, that I didn't think this budget was gonna pass. That's my job, I did my job, just like the past president of this board did their job.
I didn't get a phone call, it didn't ask me, there's nine members on this board.
I didn't, no, I didn't, but I...
But no one called me either with any questions on the budget.
So there you go, if you wanna vote in favor, well, fine.
And the questions about the...
I'm not gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote.
But then you guys wanna change it at 57, I guess.
So vote how you feel.
Then vote no, vote no.
Right, can I just say something as the board council?
Nathaniel.
Yes, Nathaniel.
Okay, so I just wanna say, as you know, I do represent a lot of boards, and a lot of boards have gone through a lot of what we are going through right now because the timelines of board development of a budget have not changed in many, many years. What Kathy was saying is true. The way the budget is developed, it's developed within a very specific time period, and it had to be submitted to the county as a tentative budget for county office approval back in March. That was submitted when the world was a different place. Most boards did put into their budgets a reasonable percentage tax increase, whether it was whatever, up to the 2% for something relating to their too. Obviously, there has been a significant amount of change since that time, but the statutory timeline for holding the budget hearing and adopting the final budget to certify the tax rate has not changed. So almost every board that I represent, and you're going to, we are only having this one meeting. And I think what Kathy and the president are trying to explain is that had we not had the pandemic, it would have been the same budget. That's what was on the agenda, as we said, or law, the budget to the board that was approved by the county office and by this board a month ago. If the majority of the board want that budget to stay the final budget, then you vote yes. If the majority of the board feel that due to the change in circumstances, they don't want to adopt that budget with that tax increase, they vote no. But then the job of the business administrator and superintendent is to recommend something that they still feel meets the thorough and efficient criteria of providing an adequate education for the children of Lyndon. In their opinion, if in the likelihood, in the possibility, which a lot of business administrators and superintendents do this, says this is the meeting and the deadline that you have, they have taken the money where they feel is the least amount of harm for the operating budget. The line items are not what you're voting on. If Mr. Revis or Ahmed, if you want to, once from now, talk about where those monies are allocated and whether to continue with certain projects, correct me if I'm wrong, Gavin. You can still do that within your operating a budget as you move forward. But for now, you have to decide how much money is gonna be raised through your tax levy. And it's either gotta be the approved budget or something that's not approved budget that will sustain your dividend. At that point, I think your business administrator has said, she's not recommending the zero, but if that's the direction of the majority of the board, she gave you the way that least impacts the operation of the budget. If I said anything that anyone want comment on, please feel free. But I just wanted you to understand from the legal perspective, I know that it's very frustrating because of the timeline being very short, but think about where we were a month or six weeks ago compared to where we are today. So that's why I think it is upsetting, but there really are only two choices you have tonight.
Thank you, Nathaniel, that's exactly what we did.
I have a question for you, Ms. Simmons. With everything that you explained, I'm understanding what you just said. Isn't the regulatory, or just for the administration, you all asked for one meeting to vote? Or could I have the administration go out for different meetings throughout these six weeks to discuss several areas of the budget?
I agree. I don't know if I can answer that question.
I can answer that, Nathaniel, I can answer that, absolutely. If someone had contacted me over this month and said they were concerned with the way the budget was put together, they didn't like certain things in certain areas, we would have met. No one gave me a phone call, an email, nothing in this one week.
Until 2:30 this afternoon.
That's the issue that we're having with Gaylord. With all due respect, we know how much work you put into this budget, but there's no one trying to call you from 2:50 central.
Ahmed, 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 Nathaniel just explained to you what happened, okay? She just explained to you what happened. My mistake was to send this out to you ahead of time as an option because if people did not want to increase the budget, if they did not want a levy, a tax levy, they wanted a zero budget, I gave you an alternative that would not affect any program staff positions. Now you're complaining that you've got this, you don't have to vote for it. This is just a backup for people to see, if it's a zero levy, where did the money come from? If zero levy means the money's coming from capital reserve, period. Not one other line on that budget was changed. It's very simple, we're making it very complicated. Another hour over one line on the budget that changed.
I understand, but we still have the right to discuss it. I was voted in along with the other eight people up there in this meeting to discuss any change, whether it be one line, half a line, quarter of a line. You don't have to explain to me what's, I'm very well educated. So you don't have to speak down to me as an... As, you know, it's very disrespectful.
You're very disrespectful, Ahmed.
I just want to also add, to also add to this board, the last meeting when we talked about this budget, it was said to us that after we were going to approve on that budget to the county, discussions were going to be taken in regards of the.
What was it again? You are absolutely correct, Mr. Rivas. I heard. Thanks for that thing.
Let's just vote. Let's just take a vote.
All right, look, we're gonna vote. Do we, I'll ask you a question. Are we voting this now?
Or was it supposed to have voted on it now?
I get that vote. Am I right?
Well, the work session says action may be taken.
Action, you're saying?
This is technically a public hearing.
Patrick is asking for coin of order.
Robert Russell, order, coin of order, please.
Yes, Mr. Gargano.
So I have that question on this budget, and I did reach out to you, and you responded back to me, and we talked about it. So you did send me the email with the difference between what's going on with the state, with the push from the end of July all the way to October with our state aid, to get information on that, to figure out why the tax increase, what's going on with taking out of the capital account and everything like that. I digested that information, 'cause I don't think we should have a tax increase during this time of the pandemic. But at the same time, with the way the protocol, if they have a discussion now, even though it's like a little worgen that some people might want to be the opposite, it's good for us to proactively have a discussion now and not rush it. So let's continue a discussion where everybody goes individually, nobody talks over one another, and we follow the proper rules of order. Save plenty of information, and then it goes to you. Save one order, and then take control of the conversation. Because everybody talking over one another is not gonna accomplish everything.
Yes, Patrick. Thank you.
With that said, we will take action on the budget tonight during this meeting.
They want, they're still discussing.
Right, they're finding it?
They want. Patrick just said they still want to have a discussion.
Oh, okay, fine.
So can we go in order that people can talk about what they wanna discuss? Nobody yelling at anybody, everybody calling what they wanna discuss, and we'll go in line and figure this out. Thank you. So who wants to talk now? Anybody wanna discuss anything on the budget?
I will start.
Thank you.
Everybody have their own time, and part of the time, three minutes for each one of us, whatever rooms the president wants to have. But I'd first like to say that based on the explanation given, thanks to Mr. Simmons, in the situation, I am definitely not going to, in my opinion, ask for a capital reserve to Mrs. Simmons. Fortunately, we are, we are, even hours a month of experience. Hello, can everybody hear?
Yes, we heard you.
I think if it's hours or four hours here, the community will see a tax increase. Let's probably ask what amount of money is. And I'm going to use the unfortunate.
Yeah, if you're not speaking, can you please mute the microphones again? We're having a lot of background noise. Thank you.
As I said, it's unfortunate that we didn't have an opportunity to, prior to today, I have an opportunity to go line by line with this one. But I'd like to remind this board that we need to change the process as we continue to go forward. That is my position, and I will wait for another board member to like to speak.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rivas, can you repeat that?
I will say that it was unfortunate that based on the information that was given to us last month in regards to the budget, it had been said today that no one had any opportunity to discuss it because we have 30 days in our hands. Unfortunately, I understood, as many of you, that these discussions were going to be started from the administration to us, not necessarily from us to the administration. And as I said to you today, it's unfortunate that we have to go back to one proposition or another, but not having the time to in detail add during these six weeks, any type of virtual meetings or phone conversation to talk about any specific of this point.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Can we point to Carlos? I'm sorry, Carlos, I disagree. I feel we have ample time. Mrs. Gaylord did tell us over a month ago about this budget being had this week put out. That's the time. We got enough time to review it, ask questions. Questions were to be directed from us to the business administrator. We normally do not have other types of meetings, you know, in between month for a month. That is not the normal protocol. It could be requested if needed. No one felt the need. I think we've asked that. It just seems today that we have a quarter of both minutes, and it seems a lot of people are complaining that another option would be used to this board by our business administrator as a viable option to help the community. And I think you just focus on that instead of complaining about, you know, why did he get it before? And we have it now, and we didn't make the decision now and work with the board as we want. Thank you.
Uh, this is Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Carlos and Manny Anthee. In response to what they're said, what they said. We were, we did vote to submit the budget to the county due to the time restraint. And I think due to the change and with this pandemic going on, and this Gaylord did give us the option of a zero increase, you know, and we were made aware of what it would cost if we did not go with, you know, the increase versus having the increase. So I'm clear on that, but due to the pandemic and all that's going on in the world right now, I'm kind of like, you know, thinking I may have to change my vote a little bit, because people are struggling as it is, and why would I wanna add another tax bill, whether it's a dollar, $3, or $50? It's still money that could be, you know, put into a household. So Patrick, I thank you for assisting with the clarification and the point of order because that was needed, and we were getting a lot of feedback. But that's all I had to say, and I'm gonna mute myself and wait for the other.
Mrs. Gaylord, the budget that we sent to the county last month, that was a budget that you obviously said was what was best for our district, correct? And what was best for our children? The budget that was sent was prepared by myself with the input of the superintendent of schools for what the programs would be, what the, what we would do for capital projects, and what we needed as far as supplies and whatever for the students. That was the budget that was sent to the county.
Hello?
Hello?
Did we lose connection?
I'm still here.
Okay.
And our job is to present the budget to you. We present the budget to the board. The board votes it up or the board votes it down. When it was, after my discussion with Mr. Gargano, thank you very much for talking about our discussion, I thought it may be important to present to you what a budget with a zero increase would look like. So we discussed it. I discussed it with Mrs. Cleary. We felt that taking the money out of capital reserve would be the only way to ensure that nobody would lose a job, no educational programs would be cut, and we'd still have money left in capital reserve. That is why you have this other piece of paper, so you can see that only two lines of the budget would change, and it's not the budget, it's the revenue source. We deducted the money out of capital reserve and added it, I mean, deducted out of the levy line and added it to capital reserve line. That's the only changes that were made.
Anybody else have any discussion that they want to add?
I just want to clarify the paperwork we received. All the board members have received the paperwork package that we received from the administration on the minutes for the special meeting on March 19, 2020. It may have been a mistake on the typing because it says that all motions were denied, and I abstained. That's what we're, if you look at our packages, so. If you remember, I believe, because I believe within this resolution, the resolutions 1 to 5 were approved with the majority of your votes. I wasn't my abstaining, but the paperwork says that everybody said nay, and me abstained. So please correct that in the paperwork that we received.
We will, we will look at that, Mr. Rivas.
All right. I have one quick question.
Okay, why?
With the budget being at zero, is there any other area within the budget that can be adjusted that would keep it at zero, so there's no tax increase on the tax payers for our community and still have optimal teaching for our students and everything like that? Is there any other way?
$1.8 million has to come out of either salaries, supplies, or other programs. That's where the money would have come from. We discussed it, and the money out of capital reserve was the most.
Doesn't impact that.
The only way that nothing else would be impacted.
Thank you.
All right, can we put a motion, this, have a vote on the budget?
Motion?
All right, now, there's gonna be possibly two votes. Hey, why don't you explain again how it's gonna go?
Where, the motion was made to to vote on the budget, on the items 1 through 6. The original agenda that you have in your hand.
So that's with the increase, correct?
That is with a 2% tax levy sub increase.
So what you're voting on now, to make sure clarity is here for everyone, the vote, what you're voting now on the budget, the original budget with the increase in taxes, that's what your vote is gonna be. It's gonna be a yes, you do support it, or no, you do not, or if you care to abstain, you could do that too, okay? Motion's on the floor.
What's that?
We need a second.
Need a second?
Motion was made by Ms. Cozak.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Rivas.
No.
Mr. Shahada.
No.
Mrs. Birch.
No.
Mr. Gargano.
No.
Ms. Gilliam.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
No.
Ms. Cozak.
No.
Mrs. Manganello.
Mrs. Manganello?
Mrs. Manganello?
I'm so sorry, no.
Mr. Martuzzi.
No.
Okay, motions were denied. Now we're gonna take a second vote on the budget with a zero levy increase. Same six resolutions. The only thing that changes is the amount of money that came out of capital reserve, $1.6 million to $3,484,318. No tax increase.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rivas.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Cozak.
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello.
Yeah.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Hey, Greg, Mr. Martuzzi, just a request. Moving forward, any changes, whether it be one line or a page, can we please get more notice? So if we do have to make.
Yeah, you know, Ahmed, you know, not for, I don't wanna trade it out and get more of a, you know, but the thing is, ever since I've been on the board, it's like, it's the same procedure. In March, we get, we get the budget, and then it's sent to the county just to make sure everything's copacetic. That's not a vote on a yes or a no. Then it comes back to us. You have a month, 30 days, or whatever, 30, 31, whatever, to look at that budget, and then in April, you have to vote yes or no. I've gone through this every, all the years I've been on board. And, you know, the yes or no. I voted no twice on the budget, and it was passed. Okay, fine, hey, I wasn't in the majority. I just voiced my opinion as a board member. I really felt that way, because back, that'd be like the first two years I was on the board. But, you know, it's the same process every year.
I understand.
It's just that we're held back a little bit this year, only due to the fact that, you know, with this whole thing that's going on, the discussion for, I mean, I'm sure all boards in the Board of Education, the state, the Jersey, is the same way. But you know what? We're dealing with, we're dealing with, and we have to do what we have to do as far as monies are concerned, to make our whole business operational with money.
And I understand that completely, but I'm just asking, is it, if there's gonna be any changes, whether it's a minor change, or a major change, or complete overhaul, just give us more notice than an hour and a half. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, I agree with you. There are certain things, and again, you know, we can suggest things to the superintendent. I'm not, in board members, again, if I sit in over and over again, we don't get involved in the operation of the school. We could say to Ms. Cleary, or, you know, I don't think we should have this, we don't have to do that, but, you know, you can make those suggestions, but the bottom line is, as a board, as an individual, you can make those. There may be certain things that we have in the district that you may think, you know, we don't need that anymore, we may have to do stuff. That's okay. That's our job. Do we say we're not gonna do, no, we don't have that right. But if you tell her, if you tell the superintendent, and she talks to the B.A. and say, you know what, as a board, as a majority, we believe that we should change it. So then it will get changed because the majority of the board said, you know, we don't, I'm not gonna pick anything out. We don't want this program anymore. We don't think it's functional anymore. But, you know, I don't have that right, or no one has that right, but if we talk about it as a group, basically, yeah. If I was saying, you know what, we don't, that's our job, but we don't demand anything. We just, all we do is vote our policy, we vote. We vote on recommendations from the superintendent. We can voice our disagreement on, anybody could voice your disagreement. I don't like this, or that vote, I don't like that program. Yeah, they're right. That's why we're here, to oversee the whole operation. And everybody is individuals, nine members, nine votes, nine separate thinking. Today, we had a disagreement. Hey, that's fine. I've had disputes. You know, I've had disagreements over the years. But you know what? It's okay to be disagreeable. Matter of fact, it's a great checks and balance system. It is. It's an absolutely great checks and balance system. But, you know, your job as a board member, whether even a board member, as an elected official, no one person could just say, you have to network with your other people and try to convince them that basically, you know, okay, you know, I'm thinking, can I get to think my way? And that's the way, you know, government works. But I agree with you. I do agree, but I do respect, you know, all your comments. I do. I mean, you don't have to, you know, agree to everybody. I certainly don't agree to everybody. You know, but to be, you know, but to disagree is what, that's fine. Have a lively discussion. Talk to another board member. What do you think? Can I convince you to do that? I want you to whiffy-whiffy on that. And you know, and then when push comes to shove, you vote, and if you're in the majority, you get your way. If you're not in the majority, you don't get your way. And I've been on both sides of the fence, you know, many, many times. But you know what? You live with it. You try your best, but sometimes your best is not good enough as far as what you actually believe in. But I thank you all for the lively discussion tonight, and I appreciate that.
You're not too old to return that to your work session.
Motion to resume work session. Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm getting the paper. Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch? Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Ms. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Ah, yes.
Greg, would you mind, since we're, we're done with the agenda, would you mind if we, we start up new business before we get into public comments?
New business and then public comments before we go into close?
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, sure.
Remember what I spoke to an hour ago, the superintendent search?
Yeah, what, all I'm gonna say is this, and I'm not gonna get involved with anyone, is due to the fact, back in January, whatever, December, January, the board voted, I believe, with 8 to 1 to conduct the search and hire the group that we did. That, you could get as a board, I think if we're not mistaken, the vote needed to vote with 8 to 1. And we gave that group the opportunity to do that and that's what they're doing. And if you're dissatisfied, you know, if the person who's in charge of that group, as you did a couple of times, you, I called me and I said, look, you called, I guess Dr. Carrick, Dr. Kinnock answered you and she's making this as, as open as possible as far as the things in the process. And you've all got packets out there and that's all I can say on that. Uh, you know, and, and my, all I can say, if you do not, yeah, but, yeah, you know, I, I, everyone had a whole packet the other day and I, I don't wanna, well, if you have any questions, all I'm telling you that's your, if you need to, and maybe if you're, you're not listening, you weren't trying to call for me, you're not gonna have a conversation. What are you gonna do? I mean, I'm not gonna see your audience. If you have a question, you call.
All five candidates are highly qualified, but, you know, I think all nine of us should be in the loop. We should be hand in hand in this process, I, I don't think...
You're, you're, well, the way I understand it, and as you do too, because I know you have talked to the doctor, that, that you are. It's just that there's certain things that they had to do prior to all of that happening. And, uh, and you know them. And so if you have any questions, if you're dissatisfied, call her and tell her, you have done that, I have done that, uh, I, I listened to what you sent to me last month. We extended it and I said, look, there's more information they need, they, we did that, did that. So, you know, if you have any questions, call her. And look, all I can tell you is this, wait, you know, let, let me just finish what I have to say and then you can respond. Bottom line, if you, if you don't like, uh, we're not, we're not having a conversation here. I'm not gonna sit here and, and go back to me. If, if you wanna be part of the process, you can. If you don't wanna be part of the process, you don't have to be. That's strictly up to you as an individual as a board member. And if you have any questions, she's reached out, everything, said, call her and she'll be very happy to explain. I'm not in charge of that, that search, I'm not in charge of that. I get what you get. And that's all I can say.
Want information?
Mr., Mr. Bargano?
So, a couple of questions I have about this. Um, so we got the public disclosure from our, about, over a week ago now. We still haven't received any information. We got a draft from her about the need assessment, but we still haven't gotten any...
They were all delivered, they were all delivered, I believe, to the board members the other day, weren't they?
No, he said he got a draft of the...
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, okay, right, yeah, I got, you guys should have gotten it, yes.
I haven't got anything with any interviews, any, um, videos or anything like that with the applicants at that point. And I, I think that we need to find out when that's going to happen, being that interviews are coming up and we have a little background on these candidates currently. And I would like, I would like for us all to go down the line and question our concerns, have a discussion about this, so we can figure out, and we're not talking over each other or anything like that. Because if somebody calls over somebody, it's just, all this is white noise on the phone and on the internet. So can we go down the line, one person at a time, and express our views and what we think and what we, what we need to do? Thank you.
And if I can kick it back, I'll, Patrick, we'll, because then I'll, I'll try to, to shut up. But the reason that we, I, I called Greg last week to try to delay the process because we weren't fully in the loop. Nobody really knew what was going on after speaking with, you know, she said that she gave the information to Greg and that the information's supposed to be dispersed. It seemed like there was a disconnect somewhere and they see that that's happening again. So we're delaying it from, you know, when it's supposed to be last week or the week before to another week or two, you know, from now, but we still don't have any information. So we literally just kicked the can down the road with the same information that we had.
Look, what I'm gonna do, when I get home, when I get home tonight, I'm gonna relay her all your messages and she will respond to all of you individually or however she's gonna do it. That's all I can do. I will, as soon as I get out of here tonight, I will call and I will tell her, that's what I'm doing.
I think that's fair to the board members to have her come in and join in on the discussion now. You know, from, but I, this is Ms. Johnson, for what I, my understanding was, was that, um, her company was going to, was building a profile and assist us with our selection process, not doing the job for us. We are, we are all elected, okay, officials to the board. And this is the most important job that we have to fill. We have to fill, find the most qualified person to fill this position to run this district. It's not fair that, you know, we, we don't have any information. From what my understanding was...
Well, what I'm gonna do tonight, I'm gonna, I will call her tonight and I will give you your response and I'm gonna have her call you personally, okay? That's what I'll do.
But yes, I'm not done. We were, we were gonna, she was gonna assist us with building a profile and assist us with the process, not do our jobs for us. And I, and, and I'm speaking for other people, um, because I think that's the direction that they're going in and they haven't had an opportunity to say that. They are feeling like we are not being part of the full process. The full process, the full process is we as a board are supposed to...
Mrs. Joffe, I know exactly what you're talking about and that is gonna take place and that's what she is doing, but you're, I will get, look, I'm gonna have her call you personally tonight.
No, we don't, we don't...
I cannot answer what you're, you're asking me. You're asking me something I cannot answer.
That's not what the question is, that's not what the problem is. The problem is, we don't wanna hear from her. We wanna hear from our entire board.
You are.
We want process from beginning to end with picking our superintendent. I've been asking this since June, I've been begging this board since June. Yes, it's probably have taken till now for people to understand exactly...
No, no, you don't understand the process. When you have 70 people applying for, no, you don't. And I'm gonna have her explain to you also, because you don't understand, well, and you're gonna argue, argue again.
He is not a board member. You hired her.
Fine, you've hired her to do the job. You voted against her and you're the only board member that voted against, so fine. I'm not gonna argue with you, Tracy, no, I, no.
To pick the superintendent, not yours, not anyone else's.
Greg, if I may, it feels like as a whole, we're stumbling because we're not all on the same page. And that's troublesome when it comes to hiring a superintendent.
We don't, we're not on the same page, same floor either, but that's, as I said before, as individuals, you have the right. But I will, I will give her your concerns, I will, I will, I will give her your concerns like I did two weeks ago. I will do that, that's all I can do.
I mean, we have to...
I don't argue, I, I don't, it's, it's counterproductive. What I'm saying is, we're stumbling as a whole right now. I think we should pause, pump the brakes, gather our footing, we should all get input from all nine of us and see which direction...
Man, I, I, I'm gonna give you all your concerns, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell it tonight, because she has to go each one of them, she'll...
You're in charge, Gail isn't.
Oh, okay. As your attorney, can I please interject here in this process to give you just a little bit of, um, legal guidance and, and suggestions, okay? And maybe it's out of order, but you can ignore me, that's fine. Um, but I, I think that, um, uh, because I have spoken with Dr. Carrick myself. I have been concerned on behalf of the board because of, of the amount of time that's gone by, the fact that the Kennedy office not approving interim superintendent situation for one year. I wasn't sure how we would proceed if the board had not gone through the full superintendent process within that year. My understanding from Dr. Carrick is that when she was asked, um, when her company was asked to assist in the process, it was her understanding that she would assemble all of the, uh, the, uh, applications, she would go through them, uh, she would do all of the necessary backgrounds and vetting of them, where that she would try to help the board in calling down to, uh, uh, five or so finalists of competency. And then those would be the five people that the board would be very involved with. Now, if that is not how this entire board now wants to proceed with that process, I think that it is very important for there to be communication, not, with all due respect, Greg, not individual board members calling Dr. Carrick, because that, that is not really the way to deal with a consultant, just like I would not let all the individual board members calling me. Um, I think that someone has to contact Dr. Carrick for her to make a presentation to the board in a closed session, because it is a personnel item and the confidentiality of that process should be maintained for all of the applicants. And the board can have a discussion with her about the five finalists and how she got there. And then you can make a decision whether we wanna interview those five. She has the videos, I believe, that are available. Um, she has all of their information that is available to the board and you have, and that is a very lengthy meeting that you are going to have to have, that you were going to, anyway, because you were going to schedule the interviews, correct?
Correct.
So that's just what I think should happen, because to, to me, arguing about this at this stage in a public setting, I really feel is not in the best interest of your candidates or of Dr. Carrick or of the board. I think that, I understand what your concerns are and I think so does the board president and Dr. Carrick will understand them once you contact her, but it should be her obligation to be part of a closed session with this board. My, my suggestion, I leave it to the rest of the board to just, plus, and I would encourage everyone to do one at a time, where we can hear everyone's point of view.
Go, 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 thank you, just, thank you very much, um. What I'm wondering is, can we please do that, that she can present to us everything she's done from the beginning? What applicants were coming in? Like, we, others have been questioning this for a while now. What applicants are coming in? Why haven't we received information on any applicants? Even though she had to submit to our non-disclosure to not release any of that information? I feel like that's very important, because literally we pushed back the date, but we still haven't, I still haven't gotten any information. I sent in all the information I need to receive information, so, so I can digest it and make a proper decision. I think that's where the big disconnect is right now, is that even though we've pushed it back, we still haven't received that information as a whole for us to discuss.
Patrick? Um, the reason why the videos have not been sent out, Dr. Carrick is waiting on everybody to submit their non-disclosures. My understanding it is that she has not received all of them yet.
Okay, so we definitely need to get on that, everybody needs to...
So how does not get received any of our videos until everyone's...
Everybody submits a non-disclosure for privacy reasons.
So once again, the entire board doesn't even know that, but other people have that information. Just like I feel that this superintendent is already picked and they're, we're just getting railroad through and pushed through this so they can pick who they want.
Ms. Birch, I just found this information, I have not to all alone, because I was following up on it uh, in regards to when we will receive the videos, so...
And no one received any of that information? Well, one board member contacted us, oh, but hey, you didn't send in your confidentiality...
I have, I have personally reached out to those that were not, that have not submitted them, so I personally did reach out and asked them to submit it.
But again, we're not children. I, love, this is not, not, uh, of the confidentiality and that we need to submit it to this specific email. We need to stay on top, if we're a lot of the officials, it is our job and our duty to serve. Check her emails.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
But people...
I see it, but I do it.
To do, like, I just, I just don't understand, I, I don't, I don't understand how like we're in a specific point in time where we can't really do much or go anywhere and our job at the end of the day is to serve. If we need to look for a superintendent, there's a superintendent search and then the email, I don't understand why there's two people who still haven't submitted their information and we're on pause and yet we have a, a, an interview that's coming up in May. So then now we're not prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliam.
I, here, I think the issue we're having is that nobody's on the same page. You don't know, I'm missing something, or I don't know that you're missing something. We don't know who the candidates are, we don't have the background. It's stumbling to the finish line, I don't wanna stumble.
No, Mr. Shahada, I'm not gonna reach out to you, I'm not willing.
I understand that, but we should all be on the same page. If somebody has anything, it should reach out to us, or Greg should reach out to us, because, you know, he's the board president and I'm, I'm pretty sure he's in contact with Gail. There has to be communication for this process, if not, we're gonna end up running this district to the ground.
I understand, however, we still all need an email, like, this goes back to the budget. Like, we all received a packet, we all received information from, it is our duty to ask questions. It is our duty to check our email. It is our duty if someone sends us something to make sure we get it back at an appropriate time. Because now we're having, we're in a search, we're in a dilemma where we have few individuals. I have no idea who they are, it's none of my concern. However, it is important that we submit whatever papers that we need to submit to whoever they need to be submitted to, so we can continue the process. Staying in a stagnant position, arguing with things that have already occurred is irrelevant. We need to move forward and I think I'm already, we're not even into those. As...
Okay, but, but, Mr. Shahada, I have... Mr. Shahada, I wanna reach out to the entire board about those that have not yet submitted them. Like I said, I did reach out and I did...
Hold up, this superintendent should be, keep us apprised, say, hey, guys...
Mr. Shahada, can I...
Hey guys, look, I'm not gonna get into, we're not gonna get into the argument of this. I will give your concerns to Dr. Carrick, okay? We have the regular meeting, that has to start at 7 o'clock and we do have people from the public that'd like to ask questions.
We still have to press it out.
You've got like 15 minutes.
We still have to press it out, to work session.
We think that is not good. Public comment. But we're talking about, these are our duty as elected board members is to hire a superintendent. That is our first job. And I will not hire a superintendent if I have not seen one thing about any applicant that has applied. This process is supposed to be for all nine of them, not for one person and not for a couple of people who don't need information. I'm sorry, we will not do this. And if any of you board members agree with how this process is going, then I don't know why you're sitting in your seats.
All right, Trey, Ms. Birch, please speak for yourself and don't speak for other people. You're more than welcome to speak for yourself, but do not throw other people, speak for yourself.
Who's gonna speak for themselves?
Because you're certainly not speaking for me.
I didn't speak for you, I...
But that's, on the way your narrative is going, that's exactly what you're doing. So let's, you know, get your narrative correct.
For myself.
So in order for us to receive the, in order for us to receive the videos, can, can I have a minute? In order for us to receive the videos, I once again ask those that have not submitted the non-disclosures, so please do so. And Mr. Shahada, I will not be informing the whole board of who submitted it or not. I will reach out to the individual and ask them to resubmit it. So please, for those, for those that have not submitted, I ask once again, please submit.
Something is missed, hey guys, there's a holdup on the thing, because two people are missing the thing. Just keep it in the loop, I don't know who it is.
You asked me that you want, okay, so please submit the non-disclosures to those that have not.
I, I'm waiting for everybody to calm down because I'm getting a very...
We're in...
No, we're not calming down, Doris, we're having a discussion and that's what this is all about.
Now you...
To have a discussion and that's what we're having. Well, yeah, okay, but don't tell people to keep calming down. We're having a lively discussion and that's what we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I, can I speak now, can I have the phone line, please? Okay, so, um, just for clarification, I'm one of those people that did not return assigned confidential agreement, um, page. I wanted clarification tonight. Um, you know, I, I feel like others, and I'm not speaking for anyone, I'm just using that as a general term, as others feel that we...
for anyone, I'm just using that as a general term, as others feel that we all should be part of this process. So I wanted clarification, I wanted to speak to other board members, you know, in this public forum, and I also wanted to hear everybody's opinion on it. Me, myself, I feel that, again, this firm was hired to guide us, to help us with a profile, to lead us on the correct path of choosing a, a superintendent that was going to run the district for us. We, we are not just gonna pick anyone based on, you know, five people. It's, it's her interviews, it's her process elimination, we, none of us, nobody else has an answer to that, and I think that's the problem. It is for me personally, you know, I, I, I want, I want to be part of that process, because this is the most important job that the board is going to do, is hire a superintendent. That's our most important function. So that's all I wanted to say, I'm gonna mute my call and wait for the votes.
I completely agree, I completely agree with Ms. Johnson, we also have...
Can I have the floor, please? I would just like to say that I understand everyone's concerns, but I do feel that we, as the board collectively voted for Dr. Carrick's firm to perform a needs assessment, we just received that, we have ample time to go over this, and we also voted collectively in to hire Dr. Carrick's firm to help in assisting the superintendent of the district, and she did meet with us and explained what her role, and I understood everything as far as Nathania has just explained was, that was my understanding from the beginning, I don't understand why and how everyone is on a different page on this game, I, I don't see it. I feel that we need to have patience, work together as a group, not complain about every little thing, and allow the process, not be paranoid and feel that certain people have picked a superintendent right, we're being railroaded like crazy, that's ridiculous. I don't understand where the, where the full process is coming from, we hired the company to help out with the situation, we were told step by step what was going to happen, and now I, and then there's constant, constant battles. We keep agreeing, we agree with this, we agree with people, because the people who dare to agree with this from the beginning are quarreling against fight month by month by month, and you're not allowing this process to happen. We, we have, you know, chances to questions given today, our president said that he would speak to Gail and have questions answered, our lawyer gave him advice of what to do and how to proceed, I think you just move on, because we're wasting a lot of time on this floor, and it's just been constant complaining. And we've been in the meeting now for a long time, and I think most of the time have been constant complaining. I would suggest that we can move on, Ms. Gilliam.
Also, we had the opportunity to submit questions, Dr. Carrick did reach out to us to submit questions to help build their profile, so that's making us part of the process, we did have that opportunity.
If I may...
Hey, guys, look, look, it's ten two, we have to go to the personnel, we gotta start a regular meeting by seven, so let's kind of, okay? I'm just letting you know.
People are aware of the process, I received my packet in the mail from Gail with the, with the superintendent's letter. It was there there from thirty to five, and I had no idea any of this was going on. I called her immediately, and I think I spoke to you right after, so we were not kept apprised every step of the way. I found out when we had five people left, and I still don't know if those nine people are. Do you guys see the concern that, that I have? That, you know, I said a key word, Gail and Herb have been jukaias, have been hired jukaias, nothing to hold for this door, there's a big difference. You know, I'm not on this select committee for, you know, obvious reasons, but I think that we should all still be hand in hand in this process, because whoever the superintendent is, they're gonna outlive all our tenure on this board. We have to keep that in mind, we have three years if we're lucky, you know, a second term if we're lucky, what if the superintendent is gonna have a minimum of three to five years? So we have to be...
We know, we know that, we all know that, we know that. I understand. All right, look, today, around the go, we gotta go to personnel, we are really pushing the clock right now, I gotta get the regular, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna go into personnel, motion to go into personnel, please.
Greg, you do public comment first.
What?
Public comment first, and then, and then...
Is that, okay, all right, we're gonna, Nathania, Nathania.
You're going to public through the work session, and then you could adjourn the work session and go into your regular meeting.
Right, okay.
All right, fine.
We thought to do a close too, Nathania.
Okay, okay, and, we're gonna...
We're gonna do questions, we're gonna comment.
Wait, Nathania first.
I'm sorry.
What are you saying, you need a closed session as part of the work session?
Yeah. Right, so we're gonna do public comment, then just go into closed for a few minutes to do the personnel agenda in our work session, then open up to the, to the regular board meeting, okay?
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, members of the public, if you have a comment, you got about three minutes, please keep them in the vote board, everything, respectability at all times, please state your name and address for the record, please, thank you.
Hello, can I speak? Hello?
Hello.
Name and, uh, name and address, please, for the record, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Julie Muldro, and I live at ninety-six Washington Avenue. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm calling to make a suggestion, my daughter is a senior, and being, being involved that we have this pandemic, my suggestion would be that they would have a graduation parade.
Uh, Ms. Hori, did I ask you? Ms. Muldro, I was in receipt of your email today, I, I didn't have a chance to get back to you yet, but we, there is a committee with the high school, so any suggestions that I've been getting, and I have received a few from parents and students, I'm going to the Mrs. Hori and the committee, and they are taking all of the different things into consideration.
Okay.
So everything you sent me today, and I have your package and everything, I will have to leave over that to Mrs. Hori and the committee, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nathana, next, please.
Hello, hello, this is Monique Calla, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Monique.
Okay, I live at three fourteen East Curtis Street, I have two questions. The first question is, what were the results of the consultant that did the interviews with everyone, roll with the outcome? And number two, what is the plan to teach our children virtually? Because there are numerous parents that are upset because teachers are not getting back to them, the kids are not learning, I know this is new, I know this is a pandemic, but I just need to know what is the plan? If there's teachers that are not up to speed with using Canvas, I understand that, but what is the plan to get them up to speed? We've had this platform in Linden School District since two thousand and fourteen, and it's been six years, I don't know why it hasn't been used to full capacity, but we need a plan to get to the next steps. I also spoke to the Department of Education in Pink Pathan County tonight, and she told me she spoke to you, Ms. Querry, and you have a plan in place, if that's the case, then I'm good, but I just need to hear what it is.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Do you, do you want to advance what the need to say?
If you want to respond, your word of honor, okay, but you'll have to, but do you want to respond? In short, in short.
All right. Hello, Mrs. Calla, so, we, we have been working on this, and I, and I did, in one of the emails I wrote back to you, that, that, you know, when we took away the video conferencing, it was a quick fix, because we had to deal with some certain issues, so we have been investigating, we have a team in place, and we are at the point where this week we were able to secure licensing, so all of our teachers will be able to have a, their own classroom URL through Cisco Webex system, so right now, we just secured that, we're setting up the, the classrooms for them, we are in the process of training this week, and we're looking at next week that we will see that start rollout where the video conferencing does come back to it. As far as scheduling, you know, we're not putting students in front of a computer from nine to two o'clock every day, but there will be set times where the teachers will have their scheduled video conferences and times for other lessons in between now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, next, please.
That's it.
Is that it? Okay, thank you so much, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to go into private session, please.
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, all those that favor say aye, aye, all right, private session. There you go.
I'm starting all...
Okay, we're back, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the regular Board of Education meeting in Linden, New Jersey, for April thirty of two thousand and twenty, please rise to the salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever since the birth of...
Statement of added notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, I put notice to this meeting and to provide as follows, on January third and April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, notice sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the State of Independence City. By state law, there is no spoken permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, the Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Mr. Rivas. Ms. Shahada.
Here.
Ms. Birch.
Here.
Mr. Bargano.
Here.
Ms. Gilliam.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Kozak.
Here.
Ms. Maganello.
President.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Oh, here, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Martuzzi, good evening, everyone, as the coronavirus continues to prevail in New Jersey, it has certainly shown an impact on our school community. We know of staff, families, parents, and students who have experienced both illness and loss throughout this devastating pandemic. On behalf of our entire school district, we offer our thoughts, prayers, sympathies, and support to all of our families who are affected by the virus. The status of our school's opening still remains uncertain, and we await the announcement from our governor, which is expected on May fifteenth. In the event schools remain closed for the rest of the year, I want you to know we have plans in place to acknowledge year-end milestone events. Moving up ceremonies, eighth grade promotion, and high school graduation will not be forgotten. These events are important and necessary for our students and families, and they will be celebrated as they should. Scholarship and awards nights will be recognized, and we all know that the show must go on, so our art and music teachers are busy planning virtual concerts with compilations of student performances and an array of artwork that our students are creating at home, so be sure to look for that coming next month. In Week Six of virtual learning, we continue to encourage you to reach out to teachers, principals, and counselors, or social workers, with any concerns you have regarding school work and family or personal needs, we are here to help and support everyone. Rapid Go Lunches are still available every day at Schools Two, Five, and Linden High School, and for any tech issues, be sure to contact the tech hub desk. I have some good news that I have already shared with board members, and staff and I'm required to share publicly as well. In February, before all this chaos hit, our district underwent a full quality single accountability continuum, otherwise known as Q-SAC review by the Department of Education. Here is an excerpt from the letter we received. I am pleased to inform you that your district has satisfied at least eighty percent of weighted indicators in each of the five areas of the NJQ-SAC review process, and has been designated as high performing. The commissioner will recommend to the State Board of Education that your district be certified as providing a thorough and efficient system of education for a period of three years for until the next Q-SAC review. Congratulations on this accomplishment. There are five areas or indicators that are assessed, and a score of eighty is required to pass each area. I tasked the acting assistant superintendent, Mike Walters, with overseeing the preparations for the review, and he enlisted the assistants of Ms. Annabel Lewis and Ms. Lizzie Lemus. They spent countless hours working with staff, gathering the required data, and uploading hundreds of documents for the review. We passed fiscal with a hundred percent, that is thanks to our VA, Ms. Kathleen Gaylord, our assistant VA, Ms. Pam Caporal, and everyone in the business office. We passed governance with one hundred percent, that is thanks to the board procedures we have in place and our ability to keep them updated. We passed operations with ninety-eight percent. State reporting, NJ smart submissions, data analysis, establishment of policies, our directors and supervisors were responsible for this, with a special thanks to Ms. Michelle Dorni, Mr. Derek Kandrowitz, and Ms. Felicia Lampkin for helping out. We passed personnel with a hundred percent, this is a huge one. They conducted audits of our personnel files and reviewed our compliance with evaluations. A special thanks to Ms. Dorni and our front office ladies for keeping our files complete and up to date, and to Mr. Walters for overseeing all of our evaluation procedures. Facilities is also a part of the Q-SAC review, and random inspections take place within our buildings. This portion is embedded into the review, and while there is not a separate score, we did pass. Thank you to Mr. Miranda and the custodial maintenance workers for having the buildings ready and up to par. Instruction and program is the area that we have always been unsuccessful in, and for the first time in about fifteen years, we have passed this indicator with a score of eighty. This section is comprised of our test scores and curriculum. Because of our progress and the amount of growth our students have demonstrated over the course of the last few years, we scored in a range that had us capable of passing instruction and program. To do so, we needed to sculpt all of our points in curriculum, which we successfully did. Mr. Walters had charge of curriculum and guided the directors and supervisors through the process to successfully achieve all of our points for this indicator. Passing Q-SAC and demonstrating our abilities to the DOE cannot be done by one or even a few, it takes an entire school community, and every staff member we have played a role in our success, and I cannot thank them enough. On that note, I would also like to acknowledge the fact that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I know that I appreciate each and every one of our teachers, and can't thank them enough for what they do each and every day and the lives that they touch. Please be sure to reach out to your teachers next week and let them know that you were thinking of them. If we were in person tonight, we would have been recognizing the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Governor Educators of the Year and our Service Professionals of the Year. We're not here with them tonight, but I would like to just read their names, so we can thank them for what they do and congratulate them on their achievements, and when they do return, whenever we get back to this normalcy, that would be a lovely gift bag for every single one of them, with a nice mug and some, some goodies for them to celebrate their achievements. For Linden High School, congratulations to Nicole Campo, teacher of English. McMattis Middle School, Sobeia Penaranda, teacher of Spanish. Soul Middle School, Anetta Ferreira, teacher of social studies. School One, Shannon Spaziani, teacher of special education. School Two, Fran Seneca, teacher of special education. School Four, Janelle Berry, teacher of pre-kindergarten. School Five, Julie Seigal, teacher of special education. School Six, Laura Stork Catida, teacher of grade one. School Eight, Stacy Wegerneck, teacher of grade two. School Nine, Melie Olson, teacher of pre-kindergarten. School Ten, Laura Medizio, teacher of grade one. In addition to that, we recognize our service professionals who support, may not be teachers in the classroom, but they are very important supports for all of our students throughout the district. We have for Linden High School, Brian Devaney, social worker. McMattis Middle School, Victoria Miller, social worker. Soul Middle School, Caitlin Sanders, guidance counselor. School One, Mary Beth Strano, paraprofessional. School Two, Rhonda Jenkins, paraprofessional. School Four, Mary Beth Knuzik, speech therapist. School Five, Liliana Lozada, paraprofessional. School Six, Elizabeth Radell, school nurse. School Eight, Anne Marie Goble, paraprofessional. School Nine, Kelly McGovern Drehaugh, speech therapist. And School Ten, Sherry Corboin, paraprofessional. All of these teachers would have had breakfast on June third with the county, but unfortunately, that's been canceled, but we certainly will make it up to them when, when we do return. So thank you to all of them, and congratulations. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I need approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes of the tentative budget work session held on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the regular reading held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Ask for motion, please.
Motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rivas.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Ms. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Bargano.
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Kozak.
Yes.
Ms. Maganello.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes, education report, uh, Mr. Jager.
Me, not Walters?
Okay.
Education report, please.
Okay, the Education Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent's spot and the acting assistant superintendent, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I would like to make a motion to approve one through... Well, respectfully, I'm sorry. Well, respectfully ask for, I'm sorry, 4. I request for a second.
Second.
Mr. Rivas.
Mr. Rivas. Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Bargano.
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Cozak.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Manganello.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Personnel, Ms. Gorgano.
Would you like to address number 1 and 2 first?
Uh, yes. Number 1, we had a passing of a former Board of Education employee. This was quite a shock, Mr. Walter Tyliki. He started working for the Linden Board of Education in 1963, teaching mathematics at Linden High School, and then he was assigned to Super Duke of Mathematics, Director of Secondary Education, and he was in charge of K-12 mathematics and science. Mr. Tyliki was promoted to the position of Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent in July of 2000. I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Tyliki. He was my colleague, then he was my supervisor, a fellow administrator, and all of our heartfelt sympathies go out to his wife Stella, who was a longstanding employee of the district as well. She taught business for many years, and all of the family. So on behalf of Linden's school district, we offer our sympathies and our thoughts of waking during this time.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Interns Superintendent of Schools, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. And then, just please note that the following appointments are, starting July 2020, are pending the physical reopening of school buildings. I make a motion to move items 1 through 10 and ask for approval.
Second.
Uh, just before we go to that, Mr. Rivas, you would ask for clarification on one of the amendments? Mr. Rivas?
Yes, I'm listening.
Yes, there was clarification on the one amendment, the amendment stipend? Okay, so I would like to clarify that. The original was that that person was put in, it was a coaching position, and they were appointed at step 2 for $4,750. They should have been appointed at step 3, which is the amount shown there.
Thank you for the clarification. So from September to now, one week will discover that now, this point?
I think what happened was, this was for the winter sports season, so I don't think it was picked up that it was the, I think when they went to submit the timesheet, they realized it was wrong because the timesheets were just submitted in this past, the end of March.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
You're done?
Okay.
Finance, Mr. Gorgano? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rivas.
I'll say yes, except for number 7 and number 10. I will go to number 7 and 8.
No, 7, 8.
Attention.
What?
No on 7, 8, and 10?
Yes.
No, it's 10.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
No on 8 and 10, yes on everything else.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Uh, yes. Uh, Finance, Mr. Gorgano?
Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Board of Administrative Board Secretaries, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Numbers 1 through 12.
Second.
Mr. Rivas?
I will say yes, except for number, which I will abstain, number 3 I will abstain, but 11 I will say no, number 1 I'll say no, number 9 I will say no, number 10 I will abstain. Number 11 I will abstain.
But you have to go, I need that again, Mr. Rivas.
No problem, no problem. Hold on. I'll abstain on 2.
Abstain on 2?
Number 10, is that, well, number 11, so I will abstain.
10.
What's going on?
You can hear him?
So that was abstain on 2, 10, 11, and 12?
Correct.
And it was no on 8?
8 and 9.
8 and 9?
7 and 9.
7, 8, and 9. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Uh, no on 6 and 7, yes for us.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Um, yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Uh, yes. Uh, nothing of buildings, around planning, policy, report? Ms. Manganello.
Thank you. The Board of Policy Committee, upon recommendation of the Interns Superintendent of Schools, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. For the first reading, policy number 5141, under the title of Help, a session has been added to the recommendation from the NJFBA to address protocols for dealing with creatives with epilepsy and seizures and memorizing them into our policies. Policy number, first reading, for number 6140, under the new curriculum adoption, a session has been added addressing the requirement... Has been addressed to provide instruction with political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people in curriculum for middle and high school students. First reading for policy number 6161.1, under the title Guidelines for Evaluation and Collection of Structural Materials, a session has been added addressing the adoption of structural materials that portray the cultural and economic diversity of society, including the political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people where appropriate.
Uh, motion?
Second.
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 Roll call.
Mr. Rivas?
There is no social essential of abstain to say yes or no abstain.
What?
Abstain.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Uh, yes. Uh, on special committees, I think, Ms. Jay, didn't you say there's something on the county that you went to? Ms. Jay? You there?
Sinead?
Sinead?
Thank you, listen.
I see she's here, microphone is muted. And I, she has to do that herself.
Uh, is she here? No.
She is here, her microphone is muted.
Uh, is she there? Uh, if not, what we'll do is that, we'll go into comments.
Are you paying any business?
I beg your pardon?
Is it paying new business?
Unfinished, uh, this goes. We don't have any new business here, we have unfinished business.
He's unfinished here.
He's asking you.
He's asking. He's asking if you're going to take any new business.
Not right now, no. We have old business, that's it. And then we'll have, comments from the public right now?
I guess, sorry, there are only the board members.
I didn't hear anybody. I didn't hear anyone at all.
Does any other board member have a board member comment or new business that they would like to say? I don't know.
High qualification. Legal advice. If a member brings up new business, those new business deserve and need to be discussed.
No, I just have a report.
Well, democracy, this isn't happening here.
And this is Ms. Johnson, not just about the gym, of anything, I mean, it's a speech of anything, it's just so kudos.
Would I say the lady who's going first, she's supposed to hear her report and was not able to do some micr...
I don't know what's going on. Wasn't there like, can someone please mute their phone so that Ms. Sinead can give her report? Okay, great.
I've asked for a report before.
I didn't hear you, I'm so sorry if you said that, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear it. Okay, so, just to go over, give me one second, I'm gonna pull it up. Okay. So, yesterday I had a virtual meeting with the Union County School Board Association, and we went over a few things, so I'm just gonna read off the things that I wrote down and elaborate on some other things that they talked about. So the first point is that they talked about the coronavirus and the delay taxes filed and lines until July 15th. There has been some extensions, or things that have been extended, rather, referring to 2020 to September 30th makes the year, the 2021 October 1st through June 30th. Requires Treasury to submit a report on the physical condition for the 2020 and 2021 by May 22nd. Also requires a revised budget from the governor by August 25th. And then with the 83904, I had shared earlier that it did not, let me just clarify. No, I'm sorry. With the 83904, permits of use for the virtual learning emergencies, requires school districts to continue to pay salaries and benefits of union, non-union, and third-party workers during a state of emergency. That was passed. The 83902 allows municipalities to delay tax collections and correspond delayed payouts, that was not passed. And furloughs, which I also discussed earlier, is the furlough program proposal would allow school districts to furlough employees who go on unemployment temporarily, take advantages of funds named available through Federal Cares Act. So, Federal Cares Act falls under the New Jersey School Board, for those who aren't aware, and that concludes my report for the Union County School Board. I also, does anyone have any questions?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that has any comments and has spoken and would like to say something?
Can you make a comment?
I beg your pardon?
Yes, can you make a comment as well? Can she make a comment?
Yes.
Sinead?
You're just, oh yeah, I'm sorry. That was a report. Yeah, you're making, I'm sorry. That was a report.
So, I would like to respectfully ask the Board President if we may have a moment of silence for those who have fallen from the virus and for those who have lost loved ones. Is that okay that we can take a moment of silence? Yes. Yes. Okay, thank you. So, I would like to extend my condolences to the Tyliki employee. Those are only my prayers. I cannot imagine what, with what you are all undergoing right now. I would like to congratulate all of the employees. We appreciate your dedication to school and the years that you have invested with our district. I would like to send special congratulations to this year. You have played a special role in my life. Thank you for always encouraging me. You were the most motivating and inspiring teacher I had at Linden High School, whether it was taking tests or doing the announcements, you've always encouraged me to have fun and pick pride in it all. This is with your sense of humor, your dedication to the students, and your infectious positivity. Lastly, I would like to thank our essential workers and administration and educators for their effort over a fully unorthodox time. I'm confident with what I've figured through these past few months that our district is prepared to meet any challenges in the future, and our students are in excellent hands. Thank you so much, and I can leave my comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to say anything, has spoken yet?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, just, final comment. Uh, first, I would like to extend my condolences to the families of Walter Tyliki and give my thanks to his many years of dedication to our district. I would also like to extend my condolences to the families of our community and our staff members for the love of our loved ones at the time. My heart truly goes out to all of you. I would like to also congratulate Mrs. Barbara Palessa, Mrs. Karen Mulligan, Mr. Brett Deck, and Mrs. Leah Wyler on their retirement. Again, I thank you for your dedication to our district. I'd like to thank our administrators, teachers, and staff and boards for their hard work and their all-involvement during this pandemic. Our teachers are going above and beyond, and they deserve our congrats praise. This is a trying time for all of us, and I'd like to give my support to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who has spoken yet, please?
Yes, I would like to make my last comment. I want to thank everybody for their patience during this meeting. This time, there was a long, four-hour debate. Never mind, just scratch it. Ms. Johnson, does anybody have a late time? Thank you.
All right, what else?
I'd like to make comments.
Is that Patrick?
Yes.
Was it? I can't hear. I'm annoying you.
Patrick, come on.
Patrick, yes.
Yeah, so I would like to thank all the teachers, all the parents, and everybody who's helping with teaching of the students right now. It's hard times right now, it's uncharted orders, and we're gonna try our best to move through it. I also want, hope that everybody gets in there on the schoolers so we can get information about the superintendent search. That way we can have more discussions and figure out what's going on with the applicants that are in there, as well as find out more about the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And Shabir?
Excuse me.
Ms. Cozak?
Excuse me, can I finish my last comment? Every time I speak, someone cuts me off.
She's not, she's not.
And I don't speak.
No one cuts you off, Ms. Johnson, you're done.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for their attention during this meeting. This meeting has been out of control, it was unruly, and, you know, it's just downright disrespectful to everyone. And I wasn't finished with my non-disclosure form because I was one of those that had questions, and I wanted to present them before the full board and not through emails or text messages, which I do not do. So, with that being said, Ms. Querry, thank you for doing a fantastic job with your staff. Ms. Gaylord, you're doing a phenomenal job trying to address the budget problems during this trying time. Everyone stay safe, I hope your families are well, and just have a great night. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cozak.
I would like to thank the administration and all the teachers for doing a phenomenal job during this difficult time. It's not easy, so we want to acknowledge you and tell you that we appreciate you and thank you for it. Just want to wish everybody to stay healthy and well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, uh, motion.
Uh, this is Carlos Rivas, I think I have a great...
Can you speak right?
No.
Now, go ahead, Carlos, go ahead. I thought you spoke already, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Problems, I'd like to continue to adhere to the... to the confidence and sense of the family we're growing. Our hearts and prayers are with everyone out there. I'd like to also thank to recognize our teachers, for those teachers that are going behind the call during these difficult times. Thank you for the fantastic job. And I, and I think about what Lloyd Delgado says, they are doing a fantastic job. Thank you for what they're doing, adapting to this situation. I also like to ask this board to give us more information, to pass more information about the Green Acre Resolution so we can all continue to discuss. I made a question before to our legal representative, if there are new businesses that have been brought up, if they need to be understood to have a discussion, but apparently, we only need given sixty seconds to talk to the public. I'd like to thank you for many of you to stay for all these long hours. This is our first virtual meeting, and I know there are many things that need to be done better. But I'd like to continue to address that for all of us as a Board of Education members, we have responsibilities with the citizens of Linden, with the education of Linden, and we should not, and this is, I want to continue to say, we should not do a business as the last minute resolutions. Every time something important has to be decided. So thank you, those are my comments.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Rivas. Just my last comment, I'd just like to thank Mikey Walters for helping us doing this. This is the first time we've done this, and we're pretty good, considering what others have tried. But again, I thank you so much for that, it was a great job. And we had good dialogue tonight. Not everybody's happy, but never, most of the time, people aren't happy.